This is the City of Wapaka, first Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
We have a public hearing first that we have to go through, so let's do that first. I'll call this public hearing to order. It has to do with the Fulton Street Corridor Overlay District. And you can see on page two of your packet that you have the public notice in there of this public hearing and that it's also going to be live on Facebook as well as our radio station and our WIM TV 991. We'll do this the same as always. We'll have testimony in favor of the new Fulton Street Corridor Overlay, and then we'll go with testimony in opposition. And Aaron, I guess I'll start with you. Do we have anybody that has wanted to speak either for or against this?
Mayor Smith, no. We didn't have anyone that wanted to give testimony for or against. We did have a number of property owners within the overlay district. Contact us, just asking questions, getting details. So we were happy to go through that with them over the last couple of weeks, but no testimony, at least that I've heard. Maybe Sandy can tell you differently.
None for me.
All right. Thank you, Sandy. And Aaron, so I guess it really comes down to who's on this on this meeting live with us tonight that has a microphone in front of them. Is there anybody that would like to give testimony in favor of this Fulton Street Corridor Overlay?
Mayor, if you don't mind, I will throw up the map real quick just so people understand kind of the area we're talking about. Are you okay with that?
I am. Again, I know that we're going to talk about this later in the meeting too, so we could do it both times, that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, I'll be real quick here. So the hashed area in the brown, what you see here, starting just on, kind of on the, on top of the hill here on West Fulton, going towards Foxfire and then on Grand Seasons Drive and all of the contiguous property around there. So it's all an overlay, over the beat four district. And like Mayor said, we'll talk in more detail about it during the meeting, just a visual.
Okay, I haven't, I didn't hear any testimony. Anybody that wanted to give testimony in favor? Do we have any testimony in opposition? So this is a, these public hearings are ones where obviously we, we need to get back into the council chambers with these so we get a better feel of the interest in town. And so, just a statement I'm making. So this is a, this is it for the public hearing then. I'll just declare this hearing closed at 6:04 PM and we'll go right into the city council agenda. I'll call this meeting to order. It's Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021, and it's 6:04 PM. And I call this meeting to order and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, and justice for all. All right. Thank you. All right. Sandy, you want to read the Clerk's open meeting statement for us?
Sure. This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
All right, then take role also for you, for us.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Steve is here, so.
Is he? Okay.
Yep.
Lori Chestnut, here. Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Porczatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair. And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Nice, thank you. Also, just go through, I'll go through this real quick. We have an attendance. Aaron, of course, our city administrator, Sandy, our city clerk. Kathy Gaza is not with us. And so we have Jerry Allen with us tonight. You can see her, I see her in the lower left-hand corner, but so she's standing in for Kathy and make sure you ask her a question. Next up, and then we have Peg Barrington, our library director. Tom Hart is with us tonight, our city attorney. Justin Barons, Public Works Director. Andrew Whitman, Parks and Rec Director. Josh Warner, our IT Community Media Director. And Brian Hoseal is not with us tonight, but he is available by phone if we do need to ask him any questions. He does not have anything on the agenda tonight, but so that's it. Do we have any other attendees? I know Terry Schultz is with us from the chamber as a guest. I see her. Did we have somebody else, Aaron, that was going to be with us tonight?
I believe Matt Flesh is here to speak about a public works project with Justin. Is that right, Justin?
That's correct. Yep, Matt is a guest that I invited.
All right, thanks, Justin. All right, let's go to the consent agenda. Sandy tells me that there's no additions to that, so unless you want to see something moved to the regular agenda, I would just need a motion to approve.
This is Lori, move to approve.
We got a motion by Martin, second by Chestnut, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, no. Anybody would like to abstain? Motion carried. Same thing with the regular agenda. Sandy says there's no additions or deletions, so it is what you see. We would need a motion to approve.
This is Lori, move to approve.
Yeah, I got a motion by Lori, second by, who was it? Oh, Peterson, thank you. Dave, I need to be looking up there. To approve the regular agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, say no. Anybody would like to abstain? Motion carried. All right. Non-agenda items and announcements. We have public input. We have, do we have anybody that would like to give us public input that's on our meeting tonight? Or Aaron, or Sandy? Do we have anybody that has written in to us and wants something in writing given at this time?
Nothing.
Nope, nothing for me.
All right. We're cruising here. All right, let's go to unfinished business. We have an appointment that needs to be made and so I'll turn that over to Council President Paul Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor appoints Andrew Whitman to the airport board. After hearing the mayor's appointment, I need a motion and a second to approve.
Move to approve, Olson.
Second, Martin.
A move by Olson, seconded by Martin to approve the mayor's appointment of Andrew Whitman to the airport board. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pause, no. Motion carries, back to you.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. You look comfortable. You got your feet up too?
I do. There's a little table in front of me.
Nice. All right. Okay, thank you. All right. Next up, we have a change, and this is just for information purposes. Our, we have our next meeting, which is supposed to be on, our next city council meeting is February 16th, has been changed to February 17th, same time, 6:00 PM because of the elections on the 16th. And then Sandy just put in there too that our first meeting in April will also be held on April 7th, Wednesday, April 7th, instead of Tuesday, April 6th because of the elections. And this is just according to our ordinance. Our ordinance actually says that that's what we need to do, that we do not hold meetings on elections days. Or city council meetings at least. All right, we have new business. We have ordinance number 012021. This is a ordinance amending the zoning code for the City of Wapaka. And this had to do with the public hearing before. Aaron, are you taking this one?
Yes, sir, I can take it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll pull up that visual again that we looked at in the public hearing. Again, this is something that was actually outlined in the written content when we updated the Chapter 17 zoning code at the end of November. What wasn't in that was the actual defined area so people could know what parcels were actually impacted by the overlay district. So that's what we're doing here. This is kind of an administrative update after the original update was made in November. Again, this Fulton Street Corridor Overlay District is really meant to address some of the challenges we're seeing in obviously our big box retail, those types of empty storefronts, and providing staff and city council and plan commission with more tools to at least consider alternative uses that we're not, we were not able to consider in the regular B4 district. So again, that was all gone through the first time. This is just a map defining the parcels impacted.
Thanks, Aaron. Anybody have any questions? At all? Okay, so you can see the ordinance is on page 33 of your packet. It's pretty short, so I'll read it real quick. This is an ordinance amending, ordinance number 092020, which repeals and recreates Chapter 17 of the zoning code, City of Wapaka Municipal Code. Whereas the intent of the ordinance number 092020 is to incorporate zoning district maps as part of the ordinance, which delineates the location and boundaries of the zoning district established. And whereas said zoning district map was not included in ordinance number 092020, now therefore it ordained the zoning district map attached herein, here too, as Exhibit A is hereby included in ordinance number 092020 by reference. The ordinance shall take effect upon passage and publication according to law. So if you're okay with it, we're going to do a roll call vote, but we need a motion and a second to approve that ordinance.
Brian, this is the first reading.
Oh, it is the first reading, I'm sorry. Yeah. Thank you. So we don't need a motion. Sandy, thank you for correcting me.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just wondering, so being an overlay district, does that mean that the underlying district, the rules that apply to that underlying district will also apply to the overlay plus additional sorts of, you know, rules, ordinance, whatever?
Yeah, good question, Dimitri. Yes, so if you were in the B4 district and you had a use permitted by right or conditional use, that would be, you know, remain the same. If the overlay district gives us those additional tools to consider other types of uses that weren't allowed in the original B4 district. And then it also gives us the tools to control the site to mitigate any impacts from those. So there will be additional requirements for those applying under the overlay district requirement. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so basically the underlying district pertains to it unless the overlay says otherwise, basically.
That is correct.
And it adds to, adds to what the underlying district has.
Yes.
All right. Anybody else, any questions before we move on?
Well, this is Paul.
Yeah, Paul, go ahead.
I'm going to allow Ruby's parents to enter in at the warehouse that sells purchased field.
Yeah, Paul, I can answer that. I can't answer it definitively. I can tell you this. I can tell you that this district allows for a path forward for them if they come forward and meet all of the requirements that are set forth in that overlay district. From a site plan perspective, the conditional use permit, they do have an opportunity to operate, or they would have an opportunity to operate in that district. We'll say that with the caveat of one thing. As we are coming, that's, that is the intention. As we're coming through Phase 2 changes in the zoning, distribution center will be discussed at a plant, at one of the, actually, next plan commission we have to do tomorrow. So with that, yes, that is the intent.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think that was Paul, I'm not sure. Okay, yeah, thank you, Aaron, for that explanation on both of those, actually. That was good. All right. Where are we going here? Okay, we're on to number 9B. This is a city hall software contract with Dude Solutions. Aaron?
Seriously, yeah. All right, so there is a memo on page 35 of your packet. This explains the process that city hall staff and CED staff and Josh Warner went through over the past several months. We started this back, I would say, in September in which we were looking at software replacements for what we have currently, and that is Munologic. We currently have a lot of efficiency problems with that. Not very user-friendly from an online permitting standpoint perspective. It has resulted in staff duplication of work that could be done the first time. It could result anywhere from two hours a week to 10 hours a week. And that's just kind of one example of some of the inefficiencies with that current software. That, one of our strategic plan items is mentioned in the background here is to accelerate economic development, to simplify processes, and become more customer-friendly. We felt like this initiative really hit on that, that action item in the strategic plan. Another real positive about what this particular software is that we currently spend about $11,500 per year. As you'll see, or as you saw in the memo, this is about just over $12,000. So the annual impact of the operational budget is not large and is something that we can just absorb within our operational budget. Now, as we went through this process, and I'm going to let Josh talk a little bit about the benefits and help me there as well, but I'll talk about the first-year costs, annual costs, which I alluded to a little bit already. The first-year costs, we had budgeted in our capital improvement plan $16,000 for this one-time cost implementation. Now, when we got the CARES Act money and we realized that this would be something that would be eligible for that, at one point in November, we thought, well, let's bring something forward, make sure we can get reimbursed for this. But then we realized that there was a number of other items within the capital improvement plan that were also technology-related that we could get reimbursed for. We felt like if we made a decision at that time as staff or a recommendation, it would be rushed. We didn't feel like we did our due diligence. So we just said, you know, we're going to get our maximum through the CARES Act. If we cover another capital improvement project instead of this one, that's okay. We're still money ahead in that, in that area. So what ended up happening is we ended up covering some of the technology upgrades in the council chambers, computer replacements, which you can see here in your memo, $10,000, but $15,500 worth that no longer had to be covered out of the geo bond borrow. So first-year costs, as you can see, is for Dude Solutions, and we actually had a number of, that we looked at, but we really narrowed it down to these two as far as what we felt like met our needs. Dude Solutions set up one-time cost, $24,855.47. That compares to Evolve's, which is $14,000, which is fairly substantial. But where we make our money back over time is in that annual maintenance cost. You can see the annual maintenance cost per year, $12,000 compared to $23,000 for Evolve. So within one year after signing a contract, we would be behind if we went towards Evolve. And again, both, we felt like met our needs. This is just up here, you can see this is a prorated when looking at annual maintenance. As far as funding breakdown, CIP Geo Revenue Bonds, this is $24,855 would be covered out of that. And then our operational budget would cover $4,030, which is the annual maintenance portion of that. Josh, I'm going to, you were pretty deep into, into the demos and communicating with them. I'm going to let you speak to some of the benefits that you saw from an IT director standpoint, as you can speak better than I can, probably.
Yeah, I'll share a couple notes from the process. I guess the overlying goal of moving with this software, the system we're with now, Munologic, I was involved with Brennan, I don't know, five, six years ago when we got that. And it was a pretty new product. The company made a lot of promises that just never came to fruition, so we're looking at something different here. And the goal is to get everything from building inspection, planning, and zoning, pretty much any form, any application license or permit that you'd apply for from city hall offices, all online, using the system, whether it's an operator's permit or a driveway permit, parking permits, cat-dog licenses. We'd get that all funneled through one system. What we found with Dude Solutions, we signed up different cities that are using it for an account to try it out. We found it's very user-friendly for the public to utilize. It walks you through step-by-step what you need to fill out. It's going to be accessible to the public 24/7. So if you want to log on at 3:00 in the morning and start the process to get a cat license, because that's convenient for you, you'll be able to do that. You can get all the, enter all your info online. You can pay for it online, or you could still come down to city hall. That's certainly still an option. But it makes the government a lot more accessible to our residents. And as we found with COVID, people may be apprehensive to leave home or maybe just the expectation to do stuff online that maybe we weren't doing in the past right now is perfect timing for something like this. It creates a lot of workflow efficiencies. There's going to be no more multiple, no more data, manual data entry by staff because right now everything comes into our offices on paper. It's being entered into computer systems. It'll be entered once by whoever's requesting it, saving a lot of time. Something else that's really nice right now, when stuff comes through, it's on paper, it goes from desk A to desk B to desk C to get approved. And depending upon what type of item the public's applying for, if it's something where there can be simultaneous staff approvals, it can get sent to three, four staff at a time. They can all check off. We can get stuff done sooner for the public, leading to better customer service. And, you know, right now there are certain types of annual permits that staff mails out letters that can all be automated and emailed to the requestor. Hey, just a reminder, your permit's up in June. Click here to renew it. So it's going to lead to, I think, a lot of efficiencies, a better experience for the resident. And, you know, I think Aaron can kind of compare this to when Park and Rec went to ActiveNet a handful of years ago. It's going to be a very similar process. And we'll still have some accommodations in place for those who don't have a computer, uncomfortable. We'll have a, we'll put up a public kiosk computer at city hall if you need to get walked through or just want to fill it out there. We can print out a paper copy of a form if we need to. So there'll be some accommodations, but we, I think this, you know, after seeing the systems, Dude Solutions is going to run circles around the program that we currently use just for a small facet of some of these items. And I think it's going to, you know, once we get it implemented and any kinks worked out, I think it's going to lead to a good user experience for our residents.
Yeah, Josh mentioned, just comparing it to the transition, the Park and Rec Department made a few years back to ActiveNet. You know, one thing we were concerned about is, well, how many people are going to use this? And within the first year and a half, it was 90-plus percent of our users in the Park and Rec Department was utilizing that program. I think equally to it, equally as important to the 90-plus percent is that 5% or whatever that aren't using it, that's still an option. We've heard that through city council as we went through the strategic planning process. When we talk about going paperless, it's not like there's not an option for paper. People need paper, if they need that copy, if they need that assistance, we will have that for them. So that will always be available. But for those who enjoy the convenience of the online, that will be more readily available here.
And one other thing I see on your memo on the screen that I didn't touch on is this is going to, this Dude Solutions is going to open some tools for our residents and the public to access. We'll be able to put city GIS maps online through this system so people can get data about different parcels and different property in the city by themselves. They don't have to wait for us to get, they can go online, choose a parcel. They can, you know, as permits are issued, they can see all that stuff. So whatever layers that Rhonda puts out there, you know, that's huge for a city our size to have data like that accessible online. It's usually larger cities that do, and that's included in that annual costs. I mean, there's a lot built into this and there's going to be a lot of positives to keep us up to date and get us ahead.
Thanks, Josh.
Nice job, Josh.
And I also want to give, so Josh and Rhonda Rollins and Elizabeth Holesworth kind of were the lead team on this. And then Sandy and Barb on the Clerk's office were also pulled in. So I want to thank them for their efforts in this because they really drilled the train. Does anyone have any questions? Otherwise, I'd be happy to answer them. I guess to sum it up, staff would be looking to approve the 2021 contract with Dude Solutions.
This is Paul. What, what payment options will people have with this new system?
Yeah, and they'll be able to pay online with credit card. One of our, one of our current two credit card vendors we work with, Point and Pay, which is an option on our website right now to make payments, integrates natively with the system, so it's going to be very familiar. And I think they accept all major credit cards. And if you still want to do check or cash, you can come into city hall and do that.
So what kind of fees do people encounter when they're using their credit cards for the system?
It's, I believe it's going to be the same fees that are charged right now using Point and Pay. And I'm looking that up really quick to tell you what those are. I'll have the page up in just a second here.
I believe it's a dollar 50 per $50. Does that sound right?
It's tiered like that, yeah.
Zero to $50 is a dollar 50, 50, 1 to 100 is $3, and then each additional 50 beyond that's a dollar 50.
Is there an option like to, directly to come out of a checking or using a debit card that doesn't cost anything for our residents to use the system?
There is not, Paul, because, and this is, you know, as we're integrating it with what our, our payment system has been for all of our other fees we take through, through card and online, that actually ended up saving us over $8,000 because we were able to do that in this process as that one-time fee. But no, we haven't had that option as far as paying electronically with a different type to avoid the fee, and we wouldn't through this either. That's, at least that's not built into it.
In general, as we've gone through different processes or as the state's gone through processes, looking at payment vendors or software solutions or things like this, there are very few out there that are free as far as doing credit card or other. are very few out there that are free as far as doing credit card or other payment options. And I guess it's a, you know, it could be a decision by the city, do we eat that fee and make it free for the resident, or do we pass that on to them? So I guess there could be some internal discussion if council wanted to see a different direction on that. I think that's something that could probably get discussed with the vendor, but traditionally, whether it's a utility bill or the current online payment options the city has, whatever fees the vendor charges, we do pass on at this time. Kathy's probably more qualified to talk about this than Erin and I.
I guess the only point I'm trying to make is that there's a differential, a cost of using their credit card or, or electronic check, and I was just hoping that that would have been an option in this situation, because that's usually less expensive.
Yeah, that's something we can ask them as we implement it and find out what the options are on that.
Yeah, if we find out that is an option, we certainly will, will report back, Paul, or if we find out it isn't, we'll report back. I guess the one option that they would always have is paying in person if they wanted to avoid that fee too.
Or they could maybe print up a paper form and mail in a check?
Yeah, they could do that as well. Yeah, that happens now, and that would be an option. I, I would not anticipate many people doing that, just from what we've seen through these other software implementations, but yes, that, that would be an option.
So the annual cost, it appears like will, will be coming out pretty decent on the, but there'll be time savings that aren't even factored in, so this is really a good improvement financially for the city beyond just the cost of the software.
Yeah, Dimitri, that's what we feel as staff. You know, for us, it's, there's enough work to do a lot of different things, it comes down to priorities, so if we can create efficiencies and free up some time, we can, we can get to more of those priorities, is how we look at it.
Well, I think it's great, and if, if no one has any other comments, I'd, I'd move to approve this.
Okay, we have a motion by Dimitri.
This is Mary Fair, I'll second that.
Second by Mary Fair that the city hall software contract with Dude Solutions be approved for an amount, first year cost not to exceed twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. Any discussion? Okay, Sandy will call her own.
Sandy, you're unmuted.
She's not talking either.
Steve Hackett.
He said aye.
Yeah, he says aye.
Okay, thank you. Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, thanks, Andy. Erin, Josh, thanks for the explanation. All right, next up has to do with our personnel policy. This has to do with local emergency for paid sick leave benefit, and I'll, I'll send it right back to Erin again.
Mayor Smith, as you can see, council members, page sixty-seven, there's a memo, and this is on, as Mayor Smith mentioned, it's a personnel policy addressing local emergency paid sick leave. This is something we enacted an ordinance on earlier in the summer of two thousand twenty that mirrored the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, the FFCRA. That act expired on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, and that provided additional emergency sick leave for our employees that are impacted or were impacted by coronavirus type situations, whether it was quarantine, sick child, actually having coronavirus. So when that went away, it was, it was ten days extra that they got. When that went away, so did that benefit in every locality across the country. We wanted to have that conversation about how do we support our staff that are impacted by this after December thirty-first? It's not necessarily their fault that they were impacted after that time, especially those staff that are contracting and possibly in the workplace, which has happened, or at least have been a contact in the worst workplace and have had to miss work because of it. So what we did is we created this policy, you can see on here the qualifications for, for basically being eligible for this. Employee is subject to federal or state, local, or local quarantine or isolation under COVID nineteen, or for COVID nineteen reasons because of a close contact in the workplace. Number two, the employee has been advised by healthcare provider to self-quarantine due to concerns related to COVID nineteen because of a close contact in the workplace. Number three, they're experiencing symptoms, and they are seeking medical diagnosis. We obviously wouldn't want them in the workplace because of that, and that is because of a close contact in the workplace. And then, four, this is one we, we added in that we felt was important, just to kind of encourage our employees to, I guess, do their part in getting the vaccine. If an employee is experiencing a reaction after receiving the COVID nineteen vaccine, they would also be eligible to take these sick days for that. This is for full-time and regular part-time employees, and they are the same exact, as far as payment goes, same exact thing as under the FFCRA. The other important things to note here is we did put some, some other, in this kinda section H, city requirements. The city, because it's a local benefit now, the city can require some documentation to prove that, you know, either public health or a medical provider is directing the quarantine. They do in fact have COVID nineteen. Also, documentation on vaccinations, if an employee chooses not to receive a vaccine after they have the opportunity to do so, they would not be eligible for this local benefit. That doesn't mean that they don't still have sick leave, they would just have to fall back on their sick leave bank, which they presumably already have, and would not be eligible for the extra ten days. Again, this is ten days, so let's say there's an employee that used five days under the FFCRA prior to December thirty-first, they would be eligible for another five to get to that ten max. If they use zero, they'd be eligible for ten. If they use ten, well, they're kinda out of that extra sick bank. So that's kind of how this, this looks. One thing I'll add to this, that if city council feels like this is something that they want to support, take action on and, and create as a policy for the temporary, or, you know, until the situation's over. One thing that we created, we, we kind of assumed that quarantining would not be needed after vaccines were received. As of today, if you receive a vaccine and you're a close contact, you are still subject to quarantine practices. So as long as that's in place, we would want to make sure that employees would be eligible for this if they received that vaccine, but we're still, we're still having to quarantine or under that direction to quarantine. So that would be the only thing that's not written in here, that if there's a motion made to accept this, I would ask that that motion include that verbiage. One more, two more points, I guess. One is, this would be retroactive to January first, so there have been some documented instances that that would impact some employees. And the other important thing to note is that the federal government might come out, it could be tomorrow, we could enact this tonight, they could come out tomorrow with a package similar to the FFCRA that we would then fall under that, and that's important to note as well. It might be tomorrow, it might be a month, but we'll, we would obviously come forward with changes to reflect whatever the federal act was, if it does come forward. So I guess with that, does, does anyone have any questions?
Okay, so we're okay with this? Do you wanna go ahead and make, I, I think this is a, a good policy. We, like Erin said, we had one example where the person needed to be quarantined and, and no fault whatsoever to that person, and this person didn't have any sick leave at all, so, I mean, they ended up having to stay home and, and, you know, and, and it wasn't even their fault, so.
Mrs. Allen, I'll make the motion as amended by what Erin said.
Martin, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Keeland, second by Martin, that we approve of the personnel policy for local emergency paid sick leave benefit. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
He said aye.
Thank you. Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next up, we have ordinance number zero-two, twenty-twenty-one. This is an ordinance dealing with remote meeting procedure using the internet meeting services. And again, this is a first reading. Erin, go ahead and explain this. I, I, if you don't hit on it, I'll probably make a comment, but I'll let you see what you have to say there.
Yeah, absolutely. So this is an ordinance that would allow city council and committee meetings to, for people to attend remotely like we have been over the last X amount of months, even after the emergency, the state of emergency has ended. So right now, we're meeting this way because we're under that state of emergency. This is something that's been talked about, is putting ordinances in place in communities as, as some communities have felt that there's a benefit to allowing this type of attendance. And I think that though it is, we see a benefit at all being in person, there are circumstances where even after we are out of a pandemic, a virtual meeting type scenario or option for council or committee members may be beneficial. So this would not only allow us to attend, but also allow us to vote legally in that, in that manner. And mayor, if I didn't hit on it, feel free to go ahead and add what you were.
No, I think you, well, let me just say that we, Erin and I talked about either doing this as an ordinance or as a policy, and the advantage of the, of the policy in my mind was, is that, you know, that's something that you look at on an annual basis, and then you, you know, you discuss how it changes and so on. Normally, ordinances are in place for perpetuity, or until you change it, of course. So I've asked Erin to add that to our work order, or whatever you wanna call it, at the end of the year. So at least the first year, we have a discussion on the pros and cons of, of meeting virtually and whether we believe that that's best for us once the pandemic is over. Obviously, we're not talking about during the pandemic time, but we are talking about what, you know, using this even after the pandemic is over, and we'll find out if that's, if it makes sense to continue that, so. Again, this is first reading, any comments?
I have a question.
Interesting.
Go ahead, Alan, I think Lori is waiting.
Today's issue of the municipality has a, addresses the new Roberts Rules of Order, and they do cover electronic meetings specifically.
Nice.
Okay.
Good, Lori, you, you had a question?
Okay, my question, my question is, on closed session, how are we to ensure that, because we're in our home and other people are there, that they are not hearing what's being discussed?
Well, you think your dog's gonna talk, or what?
No, I'm not, no, I'm just thinking in general. My dog, I have taught, I've taught her to do that, you know? No, I, I just wondered that, because it's really hard when you have, I mean, there's, I don't have anybody at home but my dog, but other people have family members that are in the home, and how do we ensure that closed session is indeed closed for them? Is, is there a method that, or a way?
Lori, I think that's a really good question. I think closed sessions are discussed as the trickiest part of this type of a thing moving forward.
Right.
Mayor and I were talking, and we haven't heard of any real bad situations or scenarios that have happened to this point. If, if people continue to meeting in this way for ten years, is it possible that something like that happens? It is, and I think we have to keep that in mind. I would say, from a closed session standpoint, you know, I guess, ask that, you know, the attendee of the meeting, whether it's a committee or a city council meeting, you know, still has kind of that same responsibility to, to keep it confidential, and, and whether that means asking someone to get out of the home, or whatever it might be, or, I, you know, we could put something together as far as maybe just some, hey, here's some tips, use headphones when in closed session, or just some little things like that. I, I can't sit here and say that you can mitigate every potential problem with it, but those are just some of my thoughts.
Thanks.
You know, and just to finish with that, or just to add on to that too, I, I think we're gonna get some direction on that too, Lori, obviously, because if it's in the, the municipality, you know, other communities are probably doing this too, so we'll find out, you know, how other communities are gonna han- handle closed sessions too, and, and we'll see.
Thank you.
Yep, Dimitri?
I, I was just gonna ask, so then, when we go into closed session in that scenario where people are participating remotely, would we not record those sessions? Because I, I would presume that, you know, the software records all of our sessions.
Correct, so we actually had one of these, a CDA meeting, and we just kinda cut the feed during that time, and then our talented IT folks, we're communicating with them as we're coming out, and then they'll fire it back up and, and start the recording and feed to the public as soon as we get out.
And let me add one thing to that too. I mean, that's, that's good, because that, you're right, it's not on any feed there, but just so you understand, we do take notes in closed session. There are notes, so it's, if there's, it's not like there's nothing being written down. It's just sealed, and nobody gets to see it, basically. Good. Any other comments or questions? Mary Fair?
Yes. So according to what I read in this policy, the, I don't know how to phrase this, the, the option to have a virtual meeting or in-person meeting after the pandemic apparently can be up to the, the mayor, the council can make the decision, the chairperson of a particular committee can make the decision. But does the, do the members then have, will they always have the option to attend that meeting virtually or in-person? How are we gonna determine that? Because if we do believe that, and I do, that face-to-face is probably the best way to meet, but there are occasions when people aren't available, and in the past, we just had to be absent from a meeting, whereas with this- And in the past, we just had to be absent from a meeting, whereas with this, we could still attend, we could still vote, um, if we aren't physically able to be at a meeting. So how would that work?
Yeah, that's a good, uh, question and, and Aaron and I actually had that discussion too. Um, I mean, we, we certainly wanna make sure that everybody that can physically meet once the pandemic is over will meet, but there are, uh, circumstances where you just can't meet, uh, in person, and this would give you the ability to virtually meet. Uh, I think we'd have to really take a look at it on an individual situation, you know? I mean, eh, once we're back in, in meeting, uh, in the council chambers, you know, I can't imagine that anybody would have to, I mean, we have, let's say we have, uh, twenty-four city council meetings in a, in a year. I mean, if it happened more than four times in a year, I would think that would be excessive. So I think those are things that we need to have a discussion on, you know, like six months after we're back in the council chambers and, and see if, if we feel like, uh, it needs to be tweaked in that matter.
So I, I, I think that's a great question, Mary, and I agree with all of Mayor's comments. Um, the only thing I'd add to that is the mayor talked about, you know, ordinance versus policy a- at the beginning of this conversation. Now, that's one thing that I think we could, we could create a policy internally that's not in ordinance form, that we have a little flexibility. Like he said, maybe four of the twenty-plus meetings over the course of a year, um, that's the expectation for you can have virtual. So maybe you're on vacation, maybe you're, whatever it is. Um, and then there needs to be special approval for anything above that, you know? That's just an example that we've discussed, so. But like Mayor Smith, I can, go ahead, Mary.
Well, I was gonna say, and then the flip side of that, of course, is if I'm on vacation, I can take a vacation from going to a meeting also. So just because virtual is available to me, doesn't mean that my vac- to, to a person, a vacation might mean I'm not gonna do anything that I normally do, I'm on vacation. But we could set people up to have that expectation that there's no reason for you to miss a meeting cuz you can do it on your phone, um, wherever you are, kinda thing. So, um, I think those are just things to keep in mind. And, and as you say, I totally agree, down the road after we've done this for a while, um, we probably will have some different viewpoints and, and, and some actual circumstances that happen that we can then talk about. So, I like it.
Good point.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else on this, uh, proposed ordinance? All right, again, that's first reading, so we'll take that up, uh, two weeks and one day from now. All right, uh, next up, we have, uh, TID number ten. Uh, this has to do with our, our, our Main Street grants that we're looking at. Uh, Aaron, again, I'll, I'll go back to you.
Thanks again, Mayor Smith. Uh, so this memo's on page seventy-five of everyone's packet. Um, this is a situation in which we were approached, uh, we've been talking as staff about, you know, we know the impacts of, of a Main Street reconstruct- reconstruction project immediately after a pandemic. Um, back-to-back years will be tough. Um, what kinda collaborations and things can we do to help mitigate some of the negatives that come with that? Uh, we were approached by the Wapaka, um, Area Community Arts Board, uh, with an idea of a project that they have in mind for this, uh, summer. And that project is a three-D mini mural project, or they're calling it the three-D alley mural project, in which some, part of their intent is to create this art downtown in the alleyways, which some businesses will be using those alleyway entrances during this time. Not all of them, but the ones that can are considering and planning to do that. Um, so on top of providing this type of art downtown, I think another initiative or another, uh, purpose of it was to drive foot traffic and give people another reason to come downtown during what may be, um, another, uh, challenging, at least segment of the year for our downtown businesses. Now, um, as, as far as permitting fees go, you know, we don't really have the ability to just say, hey, we, we're gonna waive the fees, um, for that. You know, we have ordinances built in that suggest we have to, we have to, um, charge the same amount of fees for everybody. So just because we think it's a good project, we can't just waive them. Uh, fees, because we're talking, we could be talking twenty-five different buildings or businesses, these have to be treated like sign permits. And that could be anywhere from thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars when you're talking that many sign permits across the downtown area. Um, now, uh, one way that we could support this is to collect the fees like we, like we always would with any project. Uh, but also recognize that this could help, uh, from a business development, uh, standpoint or a support standpoint. Um, and we could use, uh, TID ten dollars and the amount of four thousand dollars to kinda grant a mini grant back to this project to ensure that our fees aren't a barrier in making something like this happen. Uh, so that's really the proposal, is to approve a four thousand dollar grant from TID ten to the Wapaka Community Arts Board to be specifically used towards the two thousand twenty-one three-D alley mural project. Um, and this money would be the money that has been approved, part of that one million dollars, uh, that has been approved for the business incentive, downtown business incentive program. So four thousand dollars out of the, out of that million that was set aside.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Lori.
Okay, my question is, have the businesses, um, been talked to about this and are they in agreement in having the back of their buildings having murals on them?
Any business that would participate in, they have, there has been communication.
Okay, good.
And there, yeah, there would be no buildings that would have this on them if they weren't, um, actively in partnership with the Wapaka Area Community Arts Board.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
A question from the, Aaron, this would be up to four thousand dollars?
Um, yeah, we could do it that way, um, Alan. I, I, we don't know how many buildings they'll have to come forward with permits yet. We felt that it would be somewhere between thirty-five hundred and four thousand. Um, you know, the, the cost of this overall effort might be closer to nine thousand. This is just the permit fee portion of it. So if we were two hundred fifty dollars over, we thought that it's, you know, the grant is for a good cause going towards, um, driving people downtown this summer. So if you wanted to put an up to four thousand to cover just permit fees, we could do that. Or we could keep it at the four thousand, or we could keep it at the four thousand.
That could really double in the amount thing, couldn't it? Of the...
Um, for, for our portion of it, Lori?
Right.
No, we're, we're, we're very confident that it would not be more than that. Um, just knowing the, the building, the amount of buildings we have downtown and the amount of buildings that are targeted for the project. Um, when I said, when I said the overall budget, you know, that's with supplies and, and, and all of that stuff. I don't know what, what the rest of that budget's made up of. Um, but, but this would be the max from a permitting fee standpoint.
Okay.
Am I missing something? Um, it's, we're gonna, but the proposal is to, to, um, grant four thousand dollars so that they can give it back to us in city fees, right? It's, it's just a big circle.
Yeah, that's correct.
The difference, though, is, is that the four thousand dollars that we would be receiving would just go into the general fund where the four thousand that we're granting out is coming out of the TID. So that, that's the only difference, but you're right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Correct.
Um...
Go ahead, Mary.
Um, and what people should understand is that the Arts Board was not going to pay for the fees. So each business owner was going to have to pay their, for their permit. And we, um, it was felt that that might be cost prohibitive to the business to have to buy a permit. And if, if there were two terrific sites on one building, for instance, um, you know, that would even, that would be painted and they wanted to be involved, but it could be cost prohibitive and they wouldn't. So just so people understand that, that it wasn't, it's not the Arts Board that was, is getting the money. It's just funneling through the Arts Board because we're gonna take care of the permits for them.
Yeah, no, that's a good comment, Mary. And, and quite honestly, you know, when, when I first heard about this, I wanted to make sure that it fits what, why we set up this, uh, this grant to begin with, and I, and I do think it fits because that's what we're trying to do with, uh, with properties in the downtown. We're, we're trying to get them to aesthetically make their buildings look better on the outside, but we're also wanna make sure, you know, the other part of it, of course, is let's make sure they don't fall down either. But this part is the aesthetic part and, and I think it fits perfectly, quite honestly. We just didn't wanna set a precedent here where we said, all right, you guys don't have to pay your fee this time. You know, we don't, we don't wanna have to worry about that in the future. Okay, any other comments?
Scott has a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Uh, seeing as how this fees are kinda being recycled to the city, is there any way to refund into the, uh, TID district fund, the fees we established? So then they could be used for some other TID purposes? Or do they have to stay in the general fund?
Those, those, good question, Scott. Those have to stay in the general fund. Uh, only TIF increment can be in those, um, and just the way our ordinance is written as well, those permit fees would have to stay in the general fund.
All right. Yeah, we could get money out of the TID, but we can't put money back in unless it's incremental.
Okay.
So. All right, uh, anybody wanna make a motion?
Martin, move to approve.
Second, Hagan.
Okay, you have a motion by Martin, second by Hagan, that we approve. I, I, I just wanna clarify this cuz, uh, Alan brought this up. Are we talking about an amount not to exceed four thousand dollars in your motion, Dimitri?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And Paul, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so to approve, uh, up to four thousand dollars in grant from TID number ten to the Wapaka Community Arts Board to be specifically in, towards the two thousand twenty-one three-D alley mural project. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett.
He says aye. I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention. Aye, yeah.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
I don't see Paul, where is he? Paul, can you hear us? I don't, I don't see him on here anymore either.
Okay. Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
That'd be a lesson to all of you. Don't get too comfortable sitting in your chairs at home. All right, uh, next up, uh, oh, we get to go to Justin now. We have Hy and Harrison Street Design Engineering Services. Justin?
Thanks, Mayor. So, yeah, this is our next big road project. So Hy Street, um, from Fulton, um, about down to Highland Drive, and then Harrison Street from Fulton up to North Street. Uh, this is scheduled for construction in two thousand twenty-two. Uh, so we're starting the design process now. Uh, we budgeted eighty-five grand for the design and there's a typo there. That should be one million five thousand dollars, uh, for the construction in twenty-two, so one point, uh, zero zero five. Um, the, well, the improvements we plan on making, uh, of course, we're gonna fix the road. Uh, we got a lot of subs- or, uh, underperforming curb and gutter, sidewalks as needed, uh, storm sewer needs work, sanitary sewer has, uh, several issues underground. Our water mains and water laterals, like we've done the last couple of years, we have, uh, four-inch water main. We have lead goos next. We're gonna get rid of those and replace those. Um, I showed a basic map of, of where this project is. Um, it's pretty plain. Sorry about that. Next time I'll get a better one. Um, so to prepare for this, we need to bring on a design firm. Uh, so we created a, a request for proposals, sent it off to some qualified firms. Uh, and we detailed best value. I mean, this is professional services. We need something that will work, get an adequate design. Um, we got four back and on the table, uh, from the cover of the memo there, uh, you can see how we scored them, uh, with myself, Roger Hanson, our street superintendent, and Nate Smith. So the four firms there, Cedar Corp., Gremer, SCH, and Strand, uh, looking at all of these, we s- noticed basically two right away that we focused on, uh, which was Gremer and Strand. Uh, Cedar Corp., we saw, which was the low, was significantly low. Uh, we budgeted eighty-five thousand for this. Uh, their effort came in at forty-four, so we felt uncomfortable, uh, feeling that they would most likely leave or give us an inadequate plan. Uh, SCH, too high at hundred twenty, and then Gremer and Strand, very competitive at seventy-nine and, uh, seventy-six thousand. Um, so reviewing them, um, basically, we, we squared away on Strand. Uh, we really liked the firm, their qualifications. Uh, they showed us a schedule, uh, that detailed all the highlights of the project that would meet, uh, a build and completion, uh, that we want to provide for our community. Um, so I'm moving forward in asking to approve, uh, going into contract with Strand for the listed amount, and, uh, Matt Flesh from Strand is here and would like to say a few things, uh, about himself and the firm.
Yeah, thank you, Justin. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, yeah, my name is Matt Flesh. Uh, I'm an engineer with Strand Associates and, um, yeah, we are looking forward to this project. Been working with Justin for a couple of years on, on site plan reviews for the city. Um, so we've, uh, got some experience working with the city, uh, familiarity with your JS system utilities, um, kinda design procedures. Um, so we are, are looking forward to this project.
All right, so remind me again what you're looking for tonight then, Justin?
Um, uh, requesting approval to go into contract with Strand Associates for the Hy and Harrison Street, uh, reconstruction project, the design portion of it, uh, amount not to exceed seventy-six thousand seven hundred dollars. And note that that funding is coming from the two thousand twenty GO bonds. I verified with Kathy, it's from the two thousand twenty, um, borrow, or what she brought forward.
Okay. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Olson to approve.
Lori to second.
Uh, motion by Olson and second by Chestnut that we approve of entering into a contract for design services for Hy Street and Harrison Street reconstruction project with Strand Associates of Madison in an amount not to exceed, uh, seventy-six thousand seven hundred dollars with funding from the two thousand twenty GO bonds. Discussion?
Maybe I missed it. Um, is there a cost to property owners then along there, that section of road?
Um, eh, yes, there could be. Uh, so our sidewalk assessment ordinance would take place when we replace sidewalks. That's a, a fifty-fifty cost share, um, on just those, the, the squares that are replaced. Um, outside of that, there shouldn't be anything else. Um, we are looking at a section of Hy Street where the sidewalk ends and extending that south to Highland. Uh, so in our ordinance states that the first time in, that's a hundred percent assessed to those property owners. Um, so that we're looking into and we're gonna be, I guess, going through those sort of details during the design. The water laterals, uh, like in the past, I've been able to secure DNR funds to, to pay for the private side laterals. Um, if I can't get those funds and the property owner... Secure DNR funds to, to pay for the private side laterals. Um, if I can't get those funds and the property owner. Had that replaced, that would be on their cost.
They don't have to have that replaced?
Um, if there is, if there's a lead line there and we disturb it or somebody disturbs it, it needs to be replaced in full. Not every single house has a lead line, um, but we have. Oh, several here on this project, uh, for both sides. I think the total is 35-ish lead lines.
Those probably cost between, what, four or 5,000 to replace?
Yep.
Does the city make arrangements then, like for a payment plan, Justin, for that?
Yes, we have that, um, so like our assessment process, since it exceeds that 750 dollars, um, they can put that. Basically as, as in a, as the assessment on their, their tax bill where they have seven years to pay it off, um, plus the interest. Uh, we have additional wording in that ordinance that allows them a little bit more time, um, to do that. And certainly a, a project of this size, I would do a public information meeting, uh, try to get all the residents together and spell that all out for them. Um, well in advance of the construction.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, would we? My question, Justin, would be, would we do, like on High Street, would we do sidewalks on both sides of, of High Street or just one side?
So right now, what we're looking at is the sidewalk on the west side, extending that down to Highland Drive. Um, so I should have attached the aerial, but right there in the middle of High Street, there's a multifamily property. In the property, and that's where the sidewalk stops.
Right.
On Highland Drive, we have the extra wide shoulders and, uh, by the cemetery, that is actually the Joaquin Trail. Uh, so to try and make that connection of extending that sidewalk from where it ends down to Highland Drive. And connecting to the Joaquin Trail is what we want to accomplish. And just on the west side. Since you all know this area pretty well, you drive that, it's pretty narrow, it's curvy, and it drops off on both sides of the road, like really quickly.
Yes.
Trying to fit sidewalk on both sides would be, it's not impossible, but it's definitely outside of the budget right now.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Alright, uh. So you're ready to vote? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Steve says aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Is Paul Mayo on?
I'm, I'm on.
Okay. Hey, Paul.
So, Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Thank you. Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Andy Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, thanks. Let's, uh, go on to, uh, front end loaders, Justin, as long as you're on a roll here.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, 83 of the packet is the next memo. Uh, so we had. Budgeted a new front end loader for this year in, um, our capital planning. Uh, we put aside, uh, 225,000 dollars for it. Um, what we were expecting or how we budgeted that was we were going to look for a lightly used, uh, Volvo front end loader. We have one. Right now, um, that the guys really like, they prefer. Um, and then with that. Machine, also get a, a plow and a wing. Um, so Roger, you know, being the street superintendent. Took this and ran with it, uh, starting to look for pricing, uh, seeing where we could get, you know, a good deal and a lightly used one. And basically he got, um, forwarded to this cooperative purchasing agency, which is called Sourcewell. And found out that we can get a brand new front end loader for about the same price as, uh, what we were looking at for these lightly used ones. Um, I did not include this in the packet, but the lightly used ones. That Roger had found, uh, were anywhere from 140,000 to 160,000. And those were one to two-year-old machines with 500 to 700 hours on them. Um, so. We thought, hey, we just updated our purchase policy, uh, to allow us to use these, um, uh, purchasing agencies. And we think we found a really good one and something that is going to show a huge benefit to the city. Um, so since we found all these savings. We wanted to see if we could add on a few pieces of equipment. Uh, the first one is, uh, or. What we're looking for is, is a clam bucket or what's commonly called a grapple rake. Um, there's a picture of it if you can go down, Aaron, please. Right there. Now, the reason why I want that is because it's really, it's used for handling brush, trees, that sort of thing, and, um. We could have used it in the past with a lot of these major storms. We kind of got by without it. Uh, now that we have to cut down all these ash trees, we're looking to get this and add this piece, uh, to our inventory. So you can scroll back up, please, Aaron. So what I am looking for is basically broken down into two parts. Uh, number one is the purchase of that front end loader. Uh, with the plow and the wing, uh, for 171,889. And, excuse me, that is the purchase of the front end loader and the clam bucket. The purchase of the plow and the wing. Is 34,285 and, uh, both of these prices are through that cooperative agreement and, um. Well, the plow and the wing, we're going to use this thing for snow removal. Our older, uh, front end loader, we're going to keep that onboard. We're, that one's going to be used primarily for selt loading and other material and for basically a backup and if we need it, additional snow removal equipment.
Okay, so knowing that, uh, Justin's recommending that we go ahead and purchase, uh, a new front end loader. Anybody want to make a motion?
Uh, Alan makes the motion.
Peterson, second.
Motion by Alan, second by Dave Pete, that, uh, we approved the purchase of a new Volvo L. 78 front end loader. With clam bucket attachment from Sourcewell for an amount not to exceed 171,889 dollars. And the purchase of a snow plow and wing from Monro- Monroe Truck Equipment for an amount not to exceed. 34,285 dollars with funding, again, coming from the 2020 GO bonds. Discussion?
Mayor, this is Tom Hart. Can I just point out that that wasn't the motion? The motion was just for the. Front end loader and clam bucket attachment.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. Justin wanted two different motions.
Okay, I guess I missed that. I'm sorry. Alright, so, uh, Tom's correcting me. I'm sorry that, uh. We are just talking about the, the front end loader and the clam bucket, so. Uh, use your eraser and erase back to the clam bucket. Uh. Alright, so we had a motion in a second. Any discussion? Alright, uh, Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
He says aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Andy Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Alright, keep going then, Justin.
Uh, can I get a second motion then, or? On, uh, getting the, the plow in the wing for the front end loader from Monroe Truck Equipment?
This is Lori, move to approve.
Olson, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Chestnut and a second by Olson. At the. Council agreed to purchase a snow plow and wing from Monroe Truck Equipment for an amount not to exceed 34,285 dollars. Again, the funding will come from the 2020 GO bond. Discussion? Alright, Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Andy Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Alright, Justin, thank you on that one. It looks like you have one more here. It's, uh, air handling unit.
Yep, yep, thank you, Mayor. So on page 89 is the next memo. This is. AHU upgrade or air handling unit. Um, so back when we did. The, I don't know, if major minor renovations within City Hall, we replaced the air conditioner unit and then. Uh, upgraded the VAV valves. Those are the things that are up in the ceiling, uh, control air movement through there. Uh, V is just another component of the HVAC system. It was on that budget on that. Project, but we pulled it off just to keep things, uh, within costs, within that budget. Uh, we're bringing it back now. Uh, these air handling units are throughout the building of City Hall Library. Uh, there's a couple in the stairwells. There's a couples, a couple with the boilers and, and the pumps, uh, the exhaust fans. And again, what we're doing with these things is they're, they're controlled pneumatically with an air compressor, so they open and close with air pressure. Um, that's built up with our compressor. We can switch these things out to go to digital controls, so they have little electronic motors. Uh, when we do that, we're going to save a lot of electrical costs, uh, not running a compressor. Um, so I don't, if you, if you remember, we had that, uh, UW Milwaukee group come to the treatment plant to look for energy savings. They honed in on our compressors there and we had a good one hour solid talk on air compressors. How to control that, how to remove them, replace them with what. That's what basically got us to look at this project again. Um, so we, we did that and. I ran some, uh, return on investment calculation based on the quote we got. Um, and you can see we have. A conservative number here of, of a, under 15 years for return on investment, so. We expect that when we purchase this equipment, it's going to last a minimum of 15 years, uh, more like 25 years of a service life. Uh, so that we purchased this, the savings that we see from our electrical bill, uh, will pay off in about 14 years. Um, it was a difficult thing to calculate because our, uh, rate at City Hall Library is heavily leans on our peak demand. So when we are using electricity, um, during the middle of the day, that's when we get gouged the hardest. Um, when we use a lot of it, you know, that's when that number is like a multiplier in there. So there's an on-peak demand, there's a customer. And then we have additional, um, charges based on the on-peak versus the off-peak. It's. It's very difficult to wrap your head around. Uh, but I think I got a very good number here, uh, assuring that this project is worth it. Um, we went with, uh, ACC, um, which is Automated Comfort Controls and asked them for a proposal. This is the same company that has our, uh, maintenance contract, so they work on all of our HVAC systems and all the buildings. Um, it's also their, um, software that runs all the equipment. Now that's proprietary. They're the only ones that can come in and make any changes, adjust the schedules, uh, that sort of thing. Other companies can come in and review that program. They can't make changes. So this is a, basically a sole source purchase. Uh, they're the only ones that can really give us a good number on this. Um, however, we've worked a number of years with these guys. We know that they're very honest people. They've worked very well with us and they've done some very good work, um, with us and bringing our. Basically, bringing our systems up to speed and maintaining them to last, so. With all of that, I'm looking for approval, uh, to, with this agreement with Automated Comfort Controls to. Upgrade our air handling units, uh, for an amount not to exceed 23,602 dollars.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
This is Lori. I'll make a motion. Ms. Mary, I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, okay, we have a motion by Chestnut, second by Fair, that we enter into an agreement. With Automated Comfort Controls for Air Handling Unit Digital Upgrades in an Amount Not to Exceed. 23,602 dollars with funding, again, from the 2020 GO bonds. Discussion? Alright, uh, Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye, he says.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Andy Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Alright, excellent. Uh, Justin, thank you. Alright, uh, next up, uh, we have our issues, uh, project discussion, uh, and this is where we have no action. It's just, uh. For informational purposes and this has to do with our lake management, uh, plan project and. I'll turn it over to Andrew.
Alright, thank you, Mayor, council members. Um, so we received a, kind of like a project update. Uh, last, uh, a couple of weeks ago and, um, Sandy, I believe you were having issues connecting it, so it is on the website. Um, as a PDF. It's only three pages, so I suggest that if you didn't get a chance to take a look at it, please do so, uh, here soon. So. We're about halfway through, uh, the lake management plan process and it was a two-year process, so we should have finalized here sometime in. In 2021, so, um, just kind of an update on what they did in 2020. Uh, they completed. Some studies that aimed at evaluating the lake's aquatic plant communities, some water quality testing. And, uh, watersheds of Mirin Shadow Lake. Um, they also, if you remember, I talked about the stakeholder survey that was sent out. Um, just gathering the perceptions of the lake stakeholders, um, and they're just compiling that information still and that will be part of the final. Uh, project there, so, uh, in summer of 2020, um, water quality samples were collected, which showed an average value. Uh, showed the average values of near-surface total phosphorus, chlorophyll A and. I want to probably murder this word, but seki, seki disc depth. Um, so near total, uh, near-surface total phosphorus is the primary nutrient controlling, uh, algal growth. Uh, which is just an overgeneralized term for algae and other things that are in the, um, water. Chlorophyll A is a measure of free-floating algal abundance and then the seki disc depth is a measure of water clarity. So essentially what they do is they drop a small black and white disc down, uh, on a rope and when you lose sight of that disc. Uh, that is the, uh, seki depth, um, that they're trying to measure. So that just shows water clarity. Obviously, if I can see it down to 10 feet. The water is more clear. There's less particulates and particles in there, uh, compared to if it only gets down 30 feet. Um, so those are some of the other things that they, uh, did down there. Um. There are some, uh, [inaudible 00:08:29]. the other things that they, uh, did down there. Um, there are some, uh, facts and figures on there, so, uh, part of the figures that are on there that show those, uh, amounts, um, that were, uh, found in the water samples, and it also shows all the available historical data going back to nineteen seventy-seven. Um, no jokes about old or being born there or anything, uh, tonight for that one. So, uh, the average values for the 2020 and long-term parameters for all of those, once you take a look at that, they do fall within the excellent category for both lakes compared to Wisconsin's deep headwater drainage lakes, which is what they are considered, um, in this area. So also taken, uh, this last summer was a sediment core, um, for Shadow Lake. This is taken to show if and how nutrient levels and aquatic plant, uh, abundance have changed over time. So essentially, you're taking a big stack of the bottom, um, taking it down and then pulling that back up to analyze that. Uh, it's a useful tool to identify possible changes that are human-related and help show a glimpse of conditions before data, um, was being collected and studied. So at some point, you know, data wasn't being collected, there's the core sediment, if you wanna go back up there a little bit. And then the, the graphs or the data that I was talking about with the phosphorus, chlorophyll A is just above there. So, um, some really good information there. Um, so it shows, you know, how possibly, um, humans have affected, uh, that lake before data was, um, taken. So there's a lot of data on our lakes, um, from seventy-seven possibly forward, um, but before that, there might not be as much, so this is a way to kind of get a glimpse into that. Um, so Mear Lake had this done in the past, and Ontario felt that, um, you know, there was enough historical data on that lake to not have to do another one, um, of the core samples. So in July, ecologists also completed a whole lake point survey, intercept survey, sorry, of both Mear and Shadow Lake. Um, so what this survey is designed to assess is the aquatic plant community at a lake-wide level. Essentially, they're just going from spot to spot all over the lake in a uniform fashion, and that's, uh, the point intercept survey. At the same time they were doing that, um, they were also doing emergent and floating leaf aquatic plant, um, community map survey, um, and that's like water lilies, lily pads, and those types of things. They're also mapping to show where that is. Um, the last thing that they, uh, did, and was part of this, uh, updated report, was, um, you know, finding our invasive species. So pale-yellow iris, purple loosestrife, reed canary grass, Asian water milfoil, early-leaf pondweed, and all those were observed in and around both of our lakes, but all those were previously known by us. So they didn't find anything new or, um, something that was, you know, we should be very concerned about, um, at this time. So data from both of those, um, previously mentioned surveys, um, on the water and on the lakes in the summer, um, did indicate that the floristic quality and index of integrity of the lakes, um, were very similar to that of other lakes within that north-central hardwood forest eco-region. So overall, some good news. Obviously, we still have those, um, invasive species to deal with, and that is, you know, one of the main reasons we're doing this lake management plan. Um, so once all this is collected, they do some more collection of data in the spring, we'll get to see, you know, the results and hopefully, uh, have an action plan moving forward. So I just wanted to update everyone, and if there's any questions, I can answer those too.
Andrew, uh, thank you. Uh, there's a lot there, obviously, um, but it's, uh, good to have good knowledge of, of what's going on with our waterways and our community, uh, not only, you know, from an environment standpoint, but also from, uh, recreation standpoint. So thank you for that update.
Yep, and when the plan is done in 2021, I will bring that back to council as well, uh, for approval and adoption and, uh, cover all the information that, uh, is in it.
All right, awesome. Okay, uh, anybody else have any questions on that for Andrew? All right, uh, we have, uh, just one comment, just to remind you again, don't forget, uh, Wednesday, uh, February seventeenth at six PM versus, uh, the sixteenth for our next council meeting. Anybody else have anything for the good of the meeting tonight?
Yeah, Mayor, uh, we have one more report, uh, under Strategic Plan Reports, ten B.
Oh, I'm sorry, and I knew that too. I'm sorry. We actually have two more, don't we? Or two points under that.
Yeah, it's, um, my, my first bullet point, Mayor, is just really to set up Josh. Uh, it'll take about two minutes and then, uh, kind of set up what, what council can expect.
Well, you know what's more interesting is not a single council member stopped me. It had to be you.
I, I almost didn't stop you.
So I hope this goes well, Josh.
Um, all right, uh, so council, city council members, um, I'm just gonna pull up a real quick, uh, just a couple slides, um, and what you see here is, this is just a reminder, we have not revisited our strategic plan in a while. Um, we, you know, we've gone through 2020, almost immediately after we, we adopted this plan, a pandemic hit, and as I look back at 2020, I, in the back of my head, I'm thinking, man, we really, we have to get back to this. You know, we lost six months to nine months, and, and actually, as I look back, we actually accomplished more than I, more than I was thinking we did. Um, what we're gonna do moving forward, starting tonight, is we're gonna focus on an action item during the first meeting of each month, and we're just gonna review that action item with council. It could be something that we've already completed, it could be something that's in progress, it could be something that's not going to be completed because of whatever challenges we're facing. Josh is gonna start that tonight. This is just a reminder on kind of what those priority areas were. Number one, accelerate economic development. You see here at the top with some, some items underneath. Uh, two, strategically invest and improve and maintain public infrastructure and facilities. Three, enhance public safety. Uh, four, streamline city processes. Uh, five, ensure long-term financial sustainability, and then six, maintain the city of Wapaka as a preferred workplace. So, uh, let me go forward here. I also wanted to just quickly touch on this. So I talked about, you know, with COVID-19 and all of that came in with that, and the thought that we really lost some time. I just wanted to, these are not the only things we've made progress in, but there, I'll just touch on a couple of them. City council and staff, when we went through this process, was asked to look at what, what's the ideal future state of the city of Wapaka. And even though we have this challenging year, we, we can say that, hey, we've addressed some of these things, and we're making good progress in some of these areas. Um, with one, it's what we're talking about right now. The city has clearly defined direction and established mission, vision, goals, and action plans. Well, it's, I'll tell you what, as a city administrator, um, coming into a position a year and a half ago, knowing that a strategic plan was, um, almost to the finish line, that was extremely helpful for me. It'll be extremely helpful for staff moving forward through the next, uh, three years. Um, we'll continue to use that as our, kind of our, our true north. Um, city collaborates with surrounding organizations to benefit the whole air, the area as a whole. I think one prime example of that is the grant writer, the opportunity we were given by Mr. and Mrs. Neville, and then, uh, just the collaboration between the city, the school district, and the chamber to, to, uh, benefit the whole area. Um, downtown is reinvented, vibrant, and a debt, and is a destination. I wouldn't say we're there yet, but we're certainly doing the things that we need to to get there. Justin is obviously about to start a Main Street project, uh, in the next month and a half. Uh, within, uh, not many months after that, that will be completed, and it'll look different down here by City Hall. Uh, and on top of that, city council has supported, um, the CDA getting revitalized, and then going through that downtown incentive program, which will just be another thing on top of the Main Street project, and those little things will have impact over time. Um, attracting new families, high-quality job applicants, sought-after businesses. We've seen a growth in housing this year, uh, which we've talked about many times. Twenty-one new single-family homes, uh, compared to four the year before. Um, a new multifamily complex with fifty-four units. So we have seen, um, you know, we've seen progress in that area. Um, technology, uh, Josh is gonna talk about that tonight, and we talked about it earlier in the meeting about getting the, the software and the types of tools to, um, effectively take care of that, uh, effectively use technology to support our processes and commute, and, uh, provide community with ease and access to services. Now, what Josh is gonna touch on tonight is the community media survey he's gone through, um, and, and what him and his staff feel like are the appropriate direction out of that, and I think he'll have some questions for you guys as well as far as input goes. So I've talked enough. Um, unless anyone has any questions, we'll kick it over to Josh.
I'm gonna share my screen, Aaron, you'll have to accept that.
All right, let me figure out what I did here. Uh, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen.
Let's see. Okay, you see my PowerPoint?
Yep.
Perfect. Um, so what I'm presenting tonight's kind of threefold. One, there are some items that tie into the strategic plan. Um, two, the year 2020 really changed what we were doing with community media. You know, we're covering, all of a sudden, we're covering every single meeting the city has. A lot of the stuff we traditionally do, we're not doing, or have changed how we're doing it, or we've put it on pause, and it felt like a good time just to review everything and just take a look at everything we're doing. We did the, the survey, uh, last fall to get some feedback. There were some other ways we got feedback, and I thought I could put this all together and just kind of give everyone a quick overview what, what are all the facets of community media, what do we do. So just to give a, kind of a refresher, some information, and a couple notes. There are some extra slides in your packet that I'm not gonna present. I'm gonna try to zoom through this presentation in about ten minutes, and Aaron can attest, it's about an hour-long presentation if we into the details. I'm gonna go really quick. I left some stuff out that's in your packet if you do want some additional, uh, details. Um, so I kind of talked about, was, you know, it seemed like a good time to look at everything we're doing, review what we're doing. So once COVID settles down, and we start getting back to normal, um, what we're doing makes sense. So specifically with the strategic plan, there are three items in there that kind of tie into the city's media outlets. One of them's to effectively tell our story about the city and using the various media outlets we have. Um, one of the things we're doing was, we're doing some regular social media interviews that we also air on the TV station and radio station. Um, those are the ones with Aaron and Ron Sari from the school district. Um, we've been doing a bimonthly interview with the library, and then, um, as new programs come out with Park and Rec, um, we've been doing some interviews, and I know we're in progress to do some regular interviews with Justin, once the Main Street project gets, uh, going. So that's kind of, uh, one thing we're doing to effectively tell our story. Another thing that we just started on Wapaka Radio, and this ties into feedback on the survey, is we're doing a weekday daily, just a short little daily newscast on the radio station, and when staff and I work through that, um, you're, we're prioritizing items related to city government down there first before maybe talking about things outside the city government. So that's another way we're, uh, telling our story. Um, another point that came up in the strategic plan, the public not understanding the complexity of running, running a city. Um, so we are starting two new video series that will be social media-based, and I'll get into the details on that in a couple minutes. And then the other one is improved online services, and that was the Dude Solutions software, um, that we talked about tonight, and that ties into the city website. So we did a survey, and that survey, I'm gonna do a really high-level overview of those results. Um, one of the things we asked was, what, what media outlets from the city government do you use? And the city website was rated number one. Um, a close second place, uh, tied is the city Facebook page and Wapaka Radio. Third place was the digital signage we have in our city buildings. Code Red was fourth, and then at the bottom of that list, Win TV and our YouTube channel was the least utilized or the least familiar. Um, the people surveyed prefer short, quick content. They don't wanna watch long interviews. They don't wanna have to sift through a lot of stuff. They want their information quick and easy, and that's kind of the, not a surprise that's the si, society we live in now. We want stuff immediate, we want it quick, we wanna move on. Um, as far as accessing the government meetings, radio stations, the top place people go for that. Uh, city Facebook page is second, and then Win TV's third. Um, I know many of you took the survey, and I thank you for that, 'cause that helped give us some feedback, and there were some, some pointed questions on there, and we took all those answers from all those questions and categorized them. And this is kind of in order, what got mentioned the most, what got mentioned the least, and these are kind of the top things that we got out of that. Um, people want local news. They wanna know what's going on, and that's something, like I just said, we just started on the radio station, and that gives us another avenue to more immediately talk about what's going on with the city government. Um, the weekly-ish interview Aaron and I and Ron Sari do is very well-received. People like that. Um, I think the key takeaway is to keep that a little bit shorter, but that, that was well-received. Um, community events, community calendar, people wanna know when stuff's going on. We'll jump into that one a little bit. Uh, sports coverage came up a lot, a community interview show. Um, people want health or COVID information, access to when things are canceled. A lot of information about, uh, getting things online, streaming the radio station, or getting access to stuff online. Um, another thing that came out of it is sharing our meeting agendas on our Facebook page, road construction updates. Um, so those were some of the top things that came out of it. And I quickly go through the six media outlets that I guess kind of fallen to my department or into community media, and really just briefly overview those and a couple of highlights. The city website for the survey is the top place people go for information, and that's the kind of destination, when you're seeking something, you're gonna come here and look for it, but you're typically not gonna come to the city website just to see what's going on. You're coming here 'cause there's something specific you wanna find out. Uh, you know, one of the things I think will be huge are the road construction updates of the Main Street project. Um, comprehensive community events calendar, we'll get back to that one. And then, again, part of the strategic plan, getting that Dude Solutions software, I think that's gonna be a pretty cool thing for the city once that's implemented. Um, the city Facebook page, that's our official, uh, city government communications tool on Facebook. We have over twenty-three-hundred likes on there, and while not all those twenty-three-hundred people live within our city borders, compared to our population of six thousand, that's a pretty good number of people we can easily reach with passive information from the city. So, I mean, think more about Facebook. People, as, for those who are familiar, Facebook is, you scroll through, their stuff comes up on your feed, so someone might click play because the city's got a live meeting and it popped up on their feed, or they might get some information they otherwise wouldn't seek. So it's a good tool, uh, for that. And one of our goals with community media that we're using into is we want an average of one weekly video posted to our social media, to our Facebook page, to our website. And that could be the new video series we're gonna debut, that could be the interviews we do, uh, but we think short videos is one good way to do that. Um, and then to train the clerks department, how can we get our meeting agendas posted on there? 'Cause that was something that came out of the survey. Um, we're looking at two new social media video series. One's an informational series, and for those of you who like the city Facebook page, you might have seen the snowplow video and the, uh, sidewalk shoveling video that we put out in December. Those are good examples. These are meant to be timeless videos that answer how or why. Um, it's something, we just wanna build up a library of these, and if something comes up that matches it, we'll put that video out there to educate the public. Some other examples could be park shelter rentals, voter registration, fall leaf picking. Um, another series we're looking at is more of an interview series. Um, these would be more timely topics. It could be a look at how something in our organization works, or answering common, uh, questions, or, uh, talking about an upcoming event. So some examples could be the building incentive program, it could be a Main Street project update, it could be what happens to your wastewater when it gets to the wastewater plant, those sort of things. And that was something my staff and I asked Aaron, hey, is that something you could host? It would be a short, you know, maybe one to three-minute video, high-level look at, you know, something like that. Aaron suggested, instead of just him hosting, and I guess this is the first question for our elected officials, maybe some of our elected officials would be interested in getting involved in something like that, maybe being a guest host, or maybe there's a topic that you think would be good to cover, and I'll kind of open up if there's anyone interested that would like to be contacted in the future to maybe be involved with something like that.
Uh, this is Alan, I would.
Okay.
This is Lori, I would.
Sure, I would too, just Dimitri.
Mary.
I'll reach out to you in the future once we get this going, but, you know, the thought was, get you a little more familiarity in the community, and, you know, there might be a topic you have that you've heard from your constituents that might make sense to cover on something like that. Um, so we've kind of got, my staff kind of has a draft plan to get this going, and we're gonna kind of slowly ease into getting both these series going in February and March, and they're, you know, meant to be short little things. And they're meant to be short little things, a quick watch that we can put online. Wapaka Radio, it's easy to access, free to access, pretty much everyone has a radio. Current research shows that 90% of people access radio at least once per week, and our goal through Wapaka Radio is to get information out to people through entertainment, through short little announcements. Some goals, we've made some enhancements to our program schedule to hopefully enhance listenership. We've established an information break that features local news and national news, and that's on the air weekdays, 6:00 AM, 7:00 AM, noon, and 5:45 PM. We're looking to transition our What's Happening Wapaka TV program to a new format and moving that to radio. So those are some of the highlights there. Digital signage is another platform we operate, and we've got five digital signage units, one's in the City Hall lobby, the library front desk, rec center entrance, senior center entrance, and then on WinTV between programs, we have slides that air with local information. A lot of our, acknowledge they're familiar with these, and you know, we didn't get much feedback if there was much we had to change, but looking to maybe develop some best practices on these we can share with staff and just looking if any training or retraining is needed. Code Red, that's an emergency communications platform that Wapaka County operates and makes available to the municipalities to use. In an extreme emergency, we can use that to call landline phones, but traditionally be used to send text messages, email updates, or to push items through the Code Red app. It also provides automated severe weather alerts, and for those of you signed up, you probably noticed those alerts come a lot quicker than you hear about severe weather on TV or radio or other sources. So that's one of the cool advantages. And we've had some on-and-off discussion about that, some goals with this too, is to establish internally, when would the city use it and kind of define that, and then train more staff on how to get in there so that if something needs to go out quickly, it's not dependent on just one or two of us knowing how to do it, that there are multiple people, and then continue to promote signing up for it. Our YouTube channel, most of the video programming we tape for WinTV gets uploaded onto there. We had everything categorized on there, and two goals with that is the organizations we work with, such as Winchester, the Historical Society, or the library, we're going to be asking them to embed a YouTube playlist on their website that contains all their programs. And we'll also be asking them at least once per program to share it on their social media. We're taping it, we're making it available online, we're making it available on WinTV, and if it translates well, audio-only, we also air it on the radio. And I don't think anyone would have any issue making these programs available online on their website and social media as well, so more people can see it, and that's something we're going to try to do a better job with. And then WinTV is kind of the last outlet we operate. It's been on the air about 35 years. Demographics tend to be older people, and there's a lot of challenges against a city-operated or a public-operated cable TV station. Cable TV subscriptions are declining in lieu of online streaming services. Spectrum Cable has us hidden. We're on Channel 991, and if you look through some of the history, I think at one time you were Channel 3 and Channel 6 and some other channels where you were right up by everything else, and we're hidden. Spectrum refuses to give PEG, Public Educational and Government Access TV stations, high-definition on their system. So when you turn us on, our quality is a lot lower than the other regular cable TV stations. And cable operators are pushing to get rid of TV stations like this. So those are some of the challenges that face us. Some goals, we've reworked the program schedule, and we're having a mindset change how we do stuff. Instead of creating new content for the TV station, our mindset going forward is to create social media content, such as these video series I just mentioned. So we're going to create social media content that we're going to air on the TV station. So we're going to try planning things that way. Some things that came out of the survey, or some things that we hear often and why we're not pursuing those. And we had a lot of comments about broadcasting local sports, and that's a whole nother discussion. Does that make sense for us to do, not to do? But some reasons we've never dived into that is the cost for staffing, for the equipment. We've never had someone on staff that's a sports enthusiast that wants to take that on. And I think if the right person came out of the woodwork, that's something we discussed. And if you look back at the history of WinTV from the 1980s, they used to do a lot of sports broadcasts back then. Another comment that came up quite a bit is to boost the power to the radio station. That's a good comment to hear because that means people are listening or they want to listen, and that's part of our goal. If people are listening, we can get short little nuggets of information out between songs to keep the public more informed. We are at the highest power that's allowed by the Federal Communications Commission. I guess there are a couple solutions to that comment. There may be an opportunity in the next handful of years to get a repeater station that would rebroadcast this, that would actually be more powerful. And streaming online on the internet would be another solution. And that came up a lot in the survey and just people we've talked to, you know, how come you don't stream the radio station? And the big deterrent factor is the cost. It would be about $2,000 a year to do that, between royalties, copyright fees, and the cost of a streaming service. And if you see the size of the IT budget, that's one of those things that would be hard to rearrange stuff to make that work in the current budget. So that's why we're not doing that. And one other comment that was kind of prevalent, you know, people kind of criticized maybe some of the stuff that goes on Facebook or on the digital signage, hey, maybe there should be some more graphics on it, a little more flashy. And there's actually a reason we keep that stuff really bare and really simple, is we used to get a lot of complaints that they were hard to read, once you start putting a lot of graphics on some of those slides and graphics that go on Facebook and signage. Once they get fancy, then people complain they're hard to read, so we just keep them really basic. Something that came up quite a bit in the survey and from some people we talked to is a citywide community calendar, not just for city government, but for organizations and nonprofits to use. Granted, it's not directly the city community media department's function per se. We heard a lot of stuff that people want one central place they can go to know what's going on in Wapaka, and I don't think there's that one really good prominent source out there. Couple of years ago, I attended a meeting, and I don't know if it was actually put on by a particular organization or if it was kind of a combination of a number, but at one point, it was talked about getting a service in place that could act as a citywide community calendar, that everyone would sign up for their own account, they could put their own events in there, and then you could embed that in your respective websites, and you could choose what to display. And it seemed kind of neat, and I think that just fell apart pretty quick. And it came up again as part of the survey. There were a couple comments, maybe some of those people that made those comments were part of that a couple of years ago or familiar with that. Some of those were pretty detailed. And you know, I guess the first question, the city's probably got about three or four different independent calendars. The senior center has their own, the library has their own. We've got our own for meeting, city government meetings. So I guess the first question, could we even convince our own organization to get onto one platform? And this is where I want to pause for my second question. I'm curious what our elected officials and department heads think of this. Is this something the city should consider at some point exploring? Is it something we're not interested in? I'm kind of curious what people think about that.
Well, Josh, I would say that having that one calendar, in my regard, makes sense to have all of the city-related organizations. But it also could get very full and very complicated. And so if I want to look for what's going on at the library, I have to go through everything else to just find what's going on at the library. So it could become kind of cumbersome. So I just think that's a consideration to have.
I think it would be a real asset for tourism, where they don't know necessarily where to search to find what's happening in town. If there was one website, they could get access to, you know, where all the bands are playing or sorts of festivals are happening.
Peg has her hand up.
The Chamber actually has a really good calendar that we utilize. So we try and put all of our events on the Chamber calendar, and they include all of the things that are going on in the city. I don't know if there's any collaboration that's possible there, but I would definitely talk to Terry about that. They had no problem sharing our events.
I'm assuming that's probably something you're manually resending to them instead of just entering once, going to your site and their site, or can you elaborate on how that works?
No, we do have to send it to them. You're right, Josh, it is something that's sent.
So piggybacking off of Peg's comments, Josh, since we had this meeting about this presentation, I think it was just the end of last week, I had a meeting with Terry at the Chamber, and she showed me that they're working with Civic Brand on a kind of a website revitalization, and one of the things is a community calendar and looking to improve that. I just sent you an email as you were giving the presentation. It may make sense to, let's connect you two and just see if we can work together on creating something that works really, really well for the whole community.
Any other comments at all about this? Otherwise, I'll move on.
Well, typically, I have just a question, that typically, would those kinds of large community calendars have some kind of a filtering system where you can look at a category? So if you are interested in music, what's going on music-wise or entertainment-wise, you could zero in on that and then filter it so you wouldn't have to sort through everything?
There was a meeting I went to, like I said, I don't remember what group put it on or if it was just more of an informal thing, but at one point, there was a discussion on a citywide community calendar, I want to say three, four, maybe five years ago, I don't remember. And the thought was to get one system that everyone has their own account, they submit their stuff once, they can embed it on their website so the city could go on our homepage. We just want to show just the city stuff, but you can click here to see everything, or you could kind of pick and choose what organization or what, I guess, filter it out. And that was kind of what I was going off of when I saw some of these comments in the survey we did.
Right. I think that was the Arts and Culture Network.
It might have been, or maybe the precursor to that.
Yeah, right.
Okay. One of the interesting comments we got in the survey, and we had one person say, it feels like the city's community media department only works with the Wapaka Community Arts Board. And I shared that with Marcy, and she gave us some good ideas, but it's a misconception. And we'll work with any government unit, our local school, and any nonprofit or community group that wants to utilize us. The ones that are more prevalent, that you see or hear more often, like the Community Arts Board or Winchester or the Historical Society, are the ones that ask us to do stuff, ask to utilize our platforms. So another goal is to do a better job promoting that we're here to do that stuff. And sharing that comment with Marcy, she gave us some good ideas how we can do that. And that's one of those things after COVID slows down to start working on that. And some of those opportunities we have outside the city government to take advantage of us, we do promote community events on the radio and TV station. We will announce event cancellations on the radio station. We've got the What's Happening Wapaka program, which we're going to probably transition what that feels like when we resume it, public service announcements, and then with the local news we're doing on the radio station, news press releases. So any one that kind of fits into the whole community group type thing can take advantage of any of these opportunities, in addition to our city departments as well. So just kind of in closing with community media, just a couple closing comments. You know, there are a couple technology upgrades in this building that we're going to look at in the future at some point this year that might enhance some of the things we do. Another goal, and I got this idea from another city, I've asked Aaron on our department head meeting agendas to just have a recurring agenda item on there, just to bring up, is there anything coming up in the next couple of weeks in your department that we should promote or know about? And that's been helpful to learn about a couple of things. And kind of two changes how we do community media. One, I've been telling my staff, we need to focus on doing stuff for city government first, so making sure we're taking care of ourselves before I'm doing things for outside organizations. I'm not saying we're doing a bad job, just having that mindset. Everything we do, what can we do to make sure we're taking care of our organization first? And then the other mindset change of creating content for the web and social media, and then sharing it to the TV station. So that's just kind of the quick overview, kind of some of the things we're doing, how we tie into the strategic plan, and just kind of an overview of the different platforms we operate. So if there's any questions or comments, otherwise that's all I've got.
Josh, thank you. I think it's, you know, we talk about trying to get the word out to our constituents as well as our elected officials and even employees. You've done a great job in striding forward on that, so I hope you continue to think of ways of doing that. So I kind of kept my opinion out of this, and I'll talk to you probably separately about some of the things that I think we can do, but I didn't, you know, I think I liked, it was nice to hear all the comments that we did here tonight. Anybody else? All right, awesome. Let's go to number 11 again here. So anybody have anything for the good of the meeting tonight? Anything else?
The only thing I have, Mayor, is just a reminder that city administrator evaluations are due on Friday. Let me look. I think maybe the 8th, actually, February 8th, Monday. So if everyone could have it in by the 8th, that would be fantastic, and it'd be delivered in a sealed envelope to the front desk at City Hall, and it'll get to the HS group.
All right. We were going to do that tonight, and we pulled it off the agenda because we didn't have a real good turnout by the time Joe needed it to analyze. So we did put it off for another meeting, so I guess the good news is Aaron's got a job for another two weeks, but yeah.
Yes, thank you to those who.
All right, let's get a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Kealan, that we adjourn till our next meeting, which is Wednesday, February 17th, 2021, subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. We are adjourned at 8:07 PM. Have a great night, everybody. Let's see, go Buck.
Badgers.
Badgers.
Everybody.
Have a good night.
Good night.